All right, good afternoon, everyone. Thank you for joining us for the Thursday, February 8th, meeting of the Missoula County Board of Commissioners. To start off, will you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So from staff or the other commissioners, any public announcements today? Okay. Just a reminder, if you have one of those mobile devices in your pocket called a cellphone, please do silence it. Sometimes they have a habit of going off in these meetings. Is there any public comment from folks on items not on the agenda? And this would be for anything that does not occur on today's agenda? Okay. Seeing none. So this week's claim list, and this would be for the weeks of January 27, 2018 to February 2nd, 2018, total 1,647,349.69. And if you're interested, if you go to the hyperlink Agenda for our public meetings, you can actually drill down and see what your tax dollars are investing in by way of that figure. So we have four public hearings today, followed by a special presentation from the U.S. Forest Services Fire Lab. And to begin with, our first public hearing, which will open up, is Resolution of Intent to Transfer Surplus Soil. So I'm sure many of you were here for that one. And we'll kick it off with a staff report from Lisa Moisey.
Okay, thank you. For the record, Lisa Moisey with the Parks Trails and Open Lands Program for Missoula County. And as Commissioner Strohmeyer said, we're here today to hold a public hearing on the intent to transfer 3,500 cubic yards of mixed soil from the Fort Missoula Regional Park Phase Two site to the city of Missoula. In working through our Phase Two development out at Fort Missoula Regional Park, we have a stockpile of about 12,400 cubic yards of mixed soils. And about 3,500 of that is considered surplus to the county. And we have an opportunity, at no cost to the Fort Missoula Regional Park project or the county, to transfer that 3,500 cubic yards to the city to assist with their development of a new park called MRL Park, which would, will be located in the Franklin to Fort neighborhood. The benefits to the project is, as I mentioned, there's no cost to the county as the soil will be hauled, the cost for the hauling will be paid for by the city. It also supports the county's and the Fort Missoula Regional Park Project's efforts to attain Sites certification for the fort project. Sites is the landscape version of Leeds that many folks are familiar with. And by using our surplus soil from this project to assist with a restoration of a brownfield site into a green park area helps us gain the points that we need to achieve that site Our public process requires that the commissioners hold a public hearing after giving due notice on the intent to transfer the surplus property from county to city. And in summary, our intent is to transfer the 3,500 cubic yards of mixed soil to the MRL Park. The remaining stockpile will be used onsite and also at another county location, which includes the Big Sky Park, where we are working with one of our partners to construct an archery range at that location. And again, that will be, it's not, that portion of the dirt isn't considered surplus to the county because it will be used at another county facility. And this is a proposal that's recommended by the Fort Missoula Regional Park Projects team, as well as our oversight team, and we're bringing it forward for Commissioner consideration today.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Is there any public comment on this particular item of transferring the soil? Okay. We'll close the public hearing. Questions from commissioners?
Lisa, when you briefed us on this earlier, you had a picture of the MRL Park. Do you have that for the public to see?
I do. Yeah, I'd be happy to find that.
A rendition of it. So this is the property that's right off of Johnson and South Avenue where there used to be an industrial site there, so.
Correct.
Nice addition to the city, close to the mall.
Yep, and it is, it'll be a new park in an area that has, according to our plans that we've developed, it's considered underserved for parkland for the community.
Thank you, Lisa.
Okay. Do we need a motion?
I have a question.
Yeah?
Is the 800 cubic yards enough for the entire berm at the new archery range? Is that what that's going to be utilized for?
Well, let me show you the picture of the berm there. It's a partial berm. And this is the working drawing we have right now, and you can see on that kind of yellowish area, that berm will be located against the eastern property line. So the berm won't go around the whole area, but the portion of soil that we've allocated for this will, is enough to construct what you see on that site plan.
And this would be facilitated by Hellgate hunters and anglers, this particular project?
Exactly, yep.
Additional questions?
I just have one process question. So is the motion to adopt the resolution, is that what it is?
Lisa?
Yes, well, the motion is to adopt a resolution of intent to transfer the property, the surplus property.
Okay, thank you.
And then, does it have to be heard again because it's a resolution of intent? Do we then wait so many days and do it again?
I couldn't find anything that requires that.
Mr. Hurd?
I think you can.
Oh, it was my understanding that we, that we're ready to go. I don't, I don't believe there has to be another public hearing of this particular issue.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
And it's not like a one where we have a 30-day period and then do the resolution. So it's a resolution of intent to transfer, not a resolution of intent to transfer.
Exactly, yes.
Okay, so we intend to transfer, there we go. Well, I would move that the Board of County Commissioners declare this soil, 3,500 cubic yards of mixed soil as surplus and transfer it to the city of Missoula and use the remaining as was discussed.
Second.
Any additional discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Thank you, Lisa. Okay, our second item, second public hearing, is an open space bond project, the Hayes Family project. And to kick things off, we have a staff report from Kaylee Becker. And I'll go ahead and open the public hearing.
Good afternoon, county commissioners. My name is Kaylee Becker. I'm with Missoula County Parks Trails and Open Lands. The item before you today is a request for funding through the 2006 Open Space Bond. The request is from Five Valleys Land Trust for a purchase conservation easement. And Vicky Edwards from Five Valleys, the project sponsor, will give a brief presentation on the project, after which I'll go through my staff report. Thanks.
Thank you. Vicky?
You have to stay kind of close to it. It doesn't like you to turn your head.
Vicky Edwards. Thank you, Kaylee, and thank you, commissioners, for the opportunity to share this project with you all. This is the Hayes Family Potomac Conservation Easement that's located in the Green Oak Potomac Planting Region. It is approximately 569 acres and has quite a few conservation values associated with it. Those values include open space for continued agricultural production, important agricultural soils, wildlife habitat, and then also scenic views. And we are requesting from the county $295,000 to help us complete this project. The budget runs approximately a little less than 1.2 million. Five Valleys Land Trust has already secured $569,000 from the NRCS Agricultural Land Easement Program. And the land owner is also making a substantial in-kind and cash contribution as well. And I'll go into detail on that a little more when I bring up the budget slide. So just giving folks an idea as to where this is located, it's in the heart of the Potomac Valley. If you look at both of those maps, the polygon, the orange polygon is the property. And it's, as I mentioned, 569 acres, and that's where the conservation easement would be. Land ownership on the left side includes blue, which is DNRC, the yellow, which is BLM. There's an olive color that is the nature conservancy, and also that brown is nature conservancy as well. And then, anything that's white or tan, that's other private lands. Other conservation easements on that map have the blue lines through them, horizontal lines, and those are private lands that have conservation easements that are held by Five Valleys Land Trust. And then, other private lands with conservation easements have the gray horizontal lines through them. And you could see from this map that this connects in with other protected lands, one that includes the Iverson Potomac Conservation Easement, which was supported also by a portion of the open space bond. And the property, it really is pretty amazing. The Hayes family, first, the Anna Marie Hayes Harrison's grandfather, great-great-grandfather, first arrived in the Potomac Valley in 1888. And they are one of the oldest families that have continued to have a working ranch within the Potomac Valley. And we are working with Anna Marie Hayes Harrison and also her cousin, Ginny Hayes Murphy. And Ginny Hayes Murphy owns the property, but leases it to her cousin. And with this project, Anna Marie is going to place a conservation easement on the property, and then from the proceeds that she receives from that easement, she's going to be able to acquire the land as well. So not only does this project protect all of those conservation values, but it meets the family goals in being able to keep the property in the family, which is something that's really important for the family to leave that legacy. And currently, the property habitat-wise, we have a large portion of it that has forested habitat, as well as grassland and wetland habitat. There's approximately 12 acres of wetland on the property. That is a seasonal wetland and usually only has water in it when we have high-water years. And so fortunately, last year, that wetland was full. And that connects in with the Iverson Ranch conservation, or Iverson Ranch wetland as well. And so this easement will protect that entire wetland that spans both the Iverson Potomac Conservation Easement, as well as the Hayes Family Potomac Conservation Easement. And so there's those values, including 94% agricultural soils of statewide and local importance, open space for continued agricultural production, wildlife habitat and connectivity, and then scenic views. And the property has a very high percentage of important agricultural soils. And as I mentioned from the first slide, we have been able to secure funding from the NRCS Agricultural Land Easement Program. They have their Ale program, I'll use the acronym. It provides funding to properties and ranches that have 50% or more agricultural soils of importance. And they have to compete at a statewide level. And this project, because of all the resource values associated with it, ranked really high in the state of Montana, and we were able to secure that $569,000 to be able to move forward on this project. What's really interesting, though, about that NRCS Ale funding is that it requires a 25% cash match that has to be non-federal and not from the landowner. And so that's where it is just really important for us to be able to utilize those NRCS Ale dollars to complete projects like this and to have the open space bond program that we can go to as a match that is part of that requirement to utilize those dollars. And, and so the working ranch and looking at some of the plans that are in place in Missoula County, we have the growth policy that speaks directly to the importance of protecting important agricultural soils, as well as working landscapes. And this conservation easement will protect those values and objectives that are described in the growth policy. It also has important wildlife habitat for whitetail deer, elk, sandtoe crane, western meadowlark, and quite a few other species as well. And as I mentioned, that wetland, whenever it is full, there are quite a few different species of waterfowl that utilize that. And I'm sure amphibians as well, that we haven't documented at this point. And the scenic views, those not only from Potomac Road, but as you're heading east on Highway 200, you get the views of this property from the highway. And the Iverson Potomac Conservation Easement, part of the conservation values associated with those also, of course, include open space for working landscapes and important agricultural soils, but also scenic views. So the combination of these two, it really does enhance the already protected lands, and it also secures that protection for the current easement that's in place. And with our two maps here, the risk of development within the Potomac Valley is very high. And you could see on the left map that this does connect in with a lot of those other protected lands. With open space bond funds to the south, there was the Hall-Camus Creek Conservation Easement that was partially supported by the open space bond program. To the west, southwest, we also have the Circle Bar easement that was protected as well with open space bond funds. And then, right along the highway there, the Union Creek Project also was protected with support from open space bond funds. And you can kind of see on the map to the right with that aerial, that with the gray lines, those are the parcel lines. This area is designated as open and resource with one dwelling unit per 40 acres. But of course, that is just a recommendation. But what we've seen in this area is that a lot of these properties have been broken up into much smaller parcels, usually running between the 5 to 20 acre, and then some even smaller than that, 1 to 3 acres. And you could see on that right side, that just to the south and southeast, there's quite a bit of subdivision that has occurred with much smaller parcels there. And so the risk for this parcel and being developed and having these views, and you know, this, it doesn't have steep slopes, is very high. And so what does the conservation easement do to help protect those values that I've described? There would be no subdivision that would be permitted on this land. Also, limitations to residential development currently, there are no residences on the property. However, the easement would allow for one residence within a four-acre building envelope, and that is shown along Potomac Road there on the north side. And it has like the crosshatch lines through it, and that's where the designated building envelope would be. There's already kind of a dilapidated barn there that Anna Marie is hoping to be able to conserve and keep on the property, and that's where she's also planning on having her ranch house as well. But the rest of it would be kept open for open space. There's also a wetland zone that would protect the wetland area. And then, there's also with the NRCS Agricultural Land Easement Program, minimum deed terms that are required as part of that program. Some of those include a limitation on impervious surfaces, that's anywhere that water filtration cannot occur directly to the soil. So any paved roads, any housing structures, or even solar panels that cover up and don't allow for that percolation of water, go towards that impervious surface limitation. Also, the NRCS requires an agricultural land easement plan that is, that is approved by NRCS, the landowner of Five Valleys Land Trust. It describes management on the property and future, future management as well. It also has a forest management plan associated with that. And Anna Marie already has one of those, is, that she works with NRCS, and will update that as part of the conservation easement and agricultural land easement plan. So a lot of things in place to be able to protect all those values. Looking at the budget, as I mentioned, it's a little less than 1.2 million project cost. We have secured the $569,000 from NRCS, requesting from Missoula County Open Space Bond Program, $295,000 to help us complete this project. Five Valleys Land Trust covers our staff time, of course, through all of our memberships and fundraising that we do. And then, we also will have a landowner donation that's in-kind of $274,000 and in cash of $26,500. So that's a little more than $300,000 that Anna Marie will contribute to this project to be able to complete it. And so with that, we're hoping that you all will join us in protecting the special place. And as I mentioned, it is just extremely important for us and to be able to use those federal dollars to have that cash match that's non-federal, non-landowner, to help us complete these projects. So thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Vicky. Kaylee, did you want to come to the mic?
Yes, thank you. So I'll just go, excuse me, go over a few additional points about the process for this project to date. So as Vicky mentioned, the project proposes to use up to $295,000 of open space bond funding toward the purchase of a conservation easement on approximately 569 acres located off of Potomac Road. On November 30th of 2017, the Board of County Commissioners determined that this project was a qualified open space bond project through the adoption of Reimbursement Resolution Missoula County Open Land Citizen Advisory Committee then met on December 21st of 2017 and voted to recommend approval for this project. They ranked it highest in terms of working landscapes and scenic historic values. The 2007 inter-local agreement related to the open space bond established the general purposes of the bond, and this project meets the following purposes: managing for growth, providing open space and scenic landscapes, protecting wildlife habitat, and conserving a working ranch. This property is within a network of conserved private land, as Vicky showed on those maps, and it will add to the significant conservation work that's been done in the area, including seven conservation easements within a three-mile radius, four of which have been funded in part by Missoula County Open Space Bond Funds. The property also contains soils of local and statewide importance, as well as a small wetland area and some winter range for elk and deer. So the total project cost of over 1.16 million, the request today for $295,000 would cover about a quarter of the project costs, with the remaining costs coming from federal land or from federal funding, as well as landowner contribution. And the bond cost per acre works out to about 518. So the staff recommendation today for this project is for approval. There are no special conditions, and the draft approval resolution is in your packet, that is Attachment C. Thanks. Are there any questions?
Thank you, Kaylee. We might, in a second, is anyone from the Hayes family here today?
I don't think so.
No, unfortunately, Anna Marie was not able to make it today. She manages the ranch by herself, and she's calving right now. So she unfortunately wasn't able to make it, but wanted me to let you all know that she really appreciates the opportunity to, to work with the county on being able to protect her family's historic ranch and to the open space and all the other conservation values associated with it.
Great, thank you. So this is a public hearing. Is there any public comment on expenditure of open space bond monies for this conservation Come on up to the mic, state your name for the record.
Afternoon, commissioners. Ron Slater, S.C.H.L.A.D.E.R. I'm here representing the Missoula County Open Lands Citizen Advisory Committee. As you know, we did a site visit of this parcel on December the 1st, and what jumped out to those of us who not, not that familiar with the Potomac area was how developed this area has become over the years, and how lucky we are to have the opportunity to grab this piece of, of property that's kind of right in the middle of it all. The other thing we noticed that was, that we appreciated was that the parcel is being actively managed. It's being grazed, and they're doing timber, timber management there in the, in the timbered sections of the property, and instead of just letting it turn into one big weed patch. As Kaylee said, we, we met at our meeting on December the 21st and unanimously approved this to bring it forward to you. Therefore, the Missoula County Open Land Citizen Advisory Committee recommends that the county authorize the expenditure of up to $295,000 in open space bond funds toward the purchase of a conservation, conservation easement on 569 acres of land owned by the Hayes family.
Thank you, Ron.
Yep.
Additional public comment? Okay, seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Questions from the commission? Or a motion would be in order?
No, I just wanted to comment that I, I think it's fantastic that we have a, a local bond that we can use to leverage these large acquisitions of property for, for preservation and, and the active land management here. They've done such a fantastic job, and there's no doubt that this family will continue to manage the land very well into the future. So it's, I think it's a fantastic project. So I would move to approve the expenditure of up to $295,000 of the county's portion of the 2006 open space bond via the resolution in the packet toward the purchase of a conservation easement on approximately 569 acres for the Hayes Family Potomac Open Space Bond Project.
I'll second that motion, and I'd love to speak to it.
Yes, please.
It was great to go out and visit onsite with Anna Marie and just see her passion for the land. It's great to protect a generational working ranch, as well as those important soils and that wildlife habitat and wetlands. And I mean, as you saw in the one picture, she does this by herself. She runs that chainsaw herself. You can't tell from these pictures, but if you get back into the woods there where we went that day, she's done a great job of managing. Our presentation a little bit later on, on Fire is going, I mean, they'd be proud to see what she's done on her land because she, she recognizes that you have to manage trees as well as the open land, so happy to support it.
Thank you. Yeah, I too had the opportunity with Commissioner Curtis to tour the property, and as you can tell from the photos, this is highly developable, developable land and land that's been in agricultural production for quite some time. So I'm happy to utilize our open space bond monies for this conservation easement. So we've got a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Thanks, Vicky and Five Valleys. Thanks to staff, thanks to the Hayes family for all the work and participation in this.
Thank you, commissioners.
Thank you. So our next item is the Rick McCool Agricultural Covenant, and we have a staff report from
All right. Thank you, Dave. Jamie Urbacher with Missoula County Community and Planning Services. So this is a request from Rick McCool to use an agricultural covenant exemption from the Montana Subdivision and Planning Act, which the parties to the transaction enter into a covenant that runs with the land that's only revocable by mutual consent of the governing body and the property owner that divided the land, that the land will then be used exclusively for agricultural purposes. So the subject property is located approximately seven miles up the 9 Mile and accessed off of Cedar Creek Road. The current parcel is 158 acres of unzoned land and has a land use designation of open and resource per the 2002 Regional Land Use Guide. The northeast corner of the property is shown to contain a Zone A flood plain. There's one residence on the property and a few outbuildings. So the proposed agricultural covenant parcel is going to be approximately 120.2 acres in size and will have access off of Cedar Creek Road. The remaining lot will be 39 acres. The applicant has stated that he does not intend on selling either parcel, and since he has no intention on developing the property that's proposed for the agricultural covenant, he could protect the ranch with the covenant. In addition, this will allow for a better financing opportunity for him. I did a little follow-up with Sheila Lund, just asking about this financing opportunity. I wasn't sure what that really meant. And according to Sheila, she said that a secondary market will not loan on a parcel that's greater than 40 acres. She also said that the parcels must have a clear legal description in a deed of trust, and that secondary markets won't even buy a mortgage-exempt parcel anymore. So, that was probably not an option that they considered, and this is why they're doing the agricultural exemption. So, with the subdivision exemptions, there are some review criteria and rebuttable presumptions that we have to consider. And it's the intent of the agricultural exemption to allow a landowner to divide parcels located outside of a platted subdivision where the landowner gifts, sells, or enters into this covenant, that the property will only be used for agricultural purposes. So, Chapter 8 of the county subdivision regulations provides general evasion criteria and the rebuttable presumptions to determine whether an agricultural exemption request is an attempt to evade subdivision review. So, of these review criteria, the applicant triggered six of them, and I'm just going to run through those six that were triggered. The first criteria deals with the nature of the claimant's business. Rick is in the construction business and has developed several residential housing developments. So, that's the trigger of the first one. The next criteria triggered refers to the prior history of the tract and the timeframe in which it was transferred to the applicant. So, this parcel was transferred to Rick on June 1st of 2017, and then subsequent to that, there's been some title work done to clean up the ownership records between him and his son-in-law, who owns the adjacent property. The third criteria refers to the claimant or the applicant's history and past use of exemptions involving other tracts. In July of 2005, Rick and Linda McCool transferred property to their daughter through a family transfer. This property is located up in the Miller Creek area. Then, in 2007, the McCool's, along with the Lem family, the Brock family, and Magenta Meadows LLC, utilized a boundary line relocation for properties located off of Highway 93 North. Then again, in 2008 and 2011, the McCool's, the Lem's, and the Brock's utilized the boundary line relocation to relocate boundaries in the same area and involving some of the same parcels from the 2007 boundary line relocation. The fourth review criteria, again, deals with the past use of exemptions. As I previously mentioned, Rick has split one piece of property through family transfer to his daughter and filed three boundary line relocations under his name. Then, though not technically a past use of exemptions, I feel it's necessary to include the relationship of the applicant and the neighboring landowner, Brian Bowcamp. So, Brian is the son-in-law of Rick and owns Bowcamp Construction. Together, they purchased the Bar One Ranch, which includes a subject property and six other parcels. Brian is going through an agricultural exemption as well on the piece of property adjacent to this one here, and we will hear that next. The fifth criteria deals with the configuration of new tracts and how they are related to the contiguous platted lots where a common road is shared. For this criteria, I've noted that between Brian and Rick, they own seven parcels in this Section 34. All of these parcels are accessed off of Cedar Road. The last review criteria is related to the intended use of the tract and the Zone A floodplain. So, as I mentioned in the beginning, the northeastern corner of the property is shown to contain Zone A floodplain. Since the applicant did not submit an engineered flood analysis to determine the base flood elevation, and in lieu of the study, the subdivision exemption regulations allow a statement to be placed on the plat regarding future development and the need for an engineered So, even though six of the criteria were triggered, including the fact that the applicant is in the construction business, that his son-in-law owns adjacent land, and is also going through an agricultural exemption at the same time, staff finds that the use of the agricultural covenant is not an attempt to create additional lots for residential or commercial development, nor is the proposal an attempt to evade subdivision. As required by the regulations, the owner has proposed a covenant that will be signed by him and the Commissioners, acknowledging no development can happen on the agriculturally-restricted parcel. With the covenant, the owner has included the required steps necessary to lift the covenant. These options include aggregating it back to its original configuration or going through subdivision review. So, based on this, staff has prepared two recommended motions for the Commissioners. They're showing on your screen above. And then, I'd also like to note that we received an email regarding Joan Robinson. She is a neighboring property owner, and she wanted to clarify and raise awareness that the private road Cedar Creek is indeed private and accessed by an easement through her property, the Demon Ranch, Demmon Ranch, excuse me. Mrs. Robinson said both the road and the bridge crossing the creek to access the subject property are privately owned by her. As you're probably aware, roads and access are not reviewed through the exemption process, however, if approved, and as required, the standard note regarding lack of review and approval for access will be required to be placed on the amended plat. That's all I have for this one.
Thank you, Jamie. So, as with family transfers, do you, in this case, ask the applicant a number of rebuttable presumption questions?
We do not have a list of questions for them, however, I think Matt Jacobson with TLI was planning on attending. There he is.
Okay.
Josh, okay. Okay. So, you could direct questions to Josh.
Okay. I don't have any questions right now, unless you have anything that you want to present.
No, don't really have anything to present. Just here for questions or concerns, more so than anything. Pretty straightforward division to essentially create agricultural parcel on the timberland up there.
Okay.
Could you state your name and tell us who you represent?
Joshua Hilling. I'm with Territorial Land Works.
Okay.
And you're representing Mr. McCool?
Correct.
Okay. Do you have any questions?
Nope, just wondering if there's any other...
Yeah, this is a public hearing, which I'll open. Is there any public comment on this use of an agricultural covenant exemption? Seen none. Thank you. I'll close the public hearing. Any additional questions from the Commission? Or a motion?
I would move that the Board of County Commissioners approve the request by Rick McCool to create a parcel for agricultural use, and that the Declaration of Covenants, I should be reading what Jamie put up here, and that the attached Declaration of Covenant be signed by the Board of County Commissioners.
I'll second that. I would like to mention, and I think this hits a lot of rebuttable presumptions, and I do like that the ag covenant has a little bit of firmer sideboards on it than family transfers and whatnot. So, in order to do anything further with the land, it would have to be taken off or subdivided. So, I feel more comfortable with this type of exemption on it. I would be pretty uncomfortable with any other type of exemption on this land for this purpose, but I will second this.
Thank you. I would concur with Commissioner Rowley, and my understanding is that this primary reason is related to the mortgage and not, it does not enhance the ability to develop additional dwelling units or anything of that nature on the parcel. Any additional discussion?
The only thing they'd be able to put on an ag parcel is ag-related buildings like a hay shed or something.
Correct.
Right. And for it, if they transfer it to someone, sell it to someone else, they can only use it in that same way. They can't put a house on it, so...
Correct, it runs with the land.
Great. Okay, we've had a motion, and it's been seconded. All in favor? Aye. Okay, thank you.
And then, I would move that the Commissioners require the applicant to place the following note on the face of the certificate of survey. A flood study prepared by a licensed professional engineer determining the base flood elevation of Nine Mile Creek may be required prior to any new development of either track.
Second.
Any additional discussion? All in favor? Aye.
And I just wanted to state on the record, Jamie already said it, but our letter of approval will state that we do not guarantee access, so that private road, private bridge issue will have to be worked out with private people.
Thank you. And our final public hearing today is similar to the last one. This is the Bowcamp Construction Agricultural Covenant Proposal. Jamie, staff report.
Thank you, Dave. This is located right next door to Rick's piece of property, just to the southwest. Again, same concept, agricultural covenant running with the land, revocable only with mutual consent of the governing body. The current parcel is 154 acres. It's also unzoned and has a land use designation of open and resource per the 2002 Regional Land Use Guide. There's one residence and a few outbuildings on this parcel as well. The property is within one mile of the Zone A floodplain, however, the floodplain administrator did not have any concerns with this request. The proposed agricultural covenant parcel is approximately 132.3 acres and will have access off of Cedar Creek Road. The remaining lot will be approximately 21.9 acres, and same reasoning as Rick, the applicant is looking for better financing options and can protect the ranch land with this agricultural The applicant in this exemption has triggered four of the review criteria, which I'll just go through really quickly. First criteria deals with the nature of the claimant's business. Brian is also in the construction business and has developed several residential housing developments. The next criteria is triggered, refers to the prior history of the tract and the timeframe in which it was transferred to the applicant. Again, this parcel was transferred to the applicant on June 1st of 2017, as was the parcel to Rick McCool as part of the ranch. The third review criteria deals with the past use of exemptions, and again, I just want to mention the relationship of Rick and Brian, and that between the two of them, they purchased seven acres of property, or, excuse me, seven tracts of property. The fourth review triggered by this exemption deals with the configuration of new tracts and how they're related to contiguous platted lots where a common road is shared, again, noting that Brian and Rick own seven of the parcels in Section 34, all accessed off of Cedar Creek Road. So, again, even though four criteria are triggered here, basically the same findings as with the McCool exemption. Both are in the construction business. Rick is the father-in-law to Brian. They own adjacent lands. However, the agricultural piece will be protected from commercial or residential developments, so staff is recommending approval of this request as well.
Thank you, Jamie. Is the applicant or applicant's representative wanting to make any comment at this time? Okay, I'll open up the public hearing. Is there any additional public comment on this item? Seen none, I will close the public hearing. Any questions from the Commission? Or a motion?
Same comment as before, but I would move that the request by the Bowcamp Construction to create a parcel for agricultural use be approved, and that the attached Declaration of Covenant be signed by the Board of County Commissioners. Second.
Any additional discussion? All in favor? Aye.
And we'll have that same notation about the road and access in the approval letter as well.
Thank you, Jamie.
Thank you.
And it appears as though some in the audience might still be interested in fire, so we will move into our final item of business today, and this is a special presentation related to fire. So, just by way of introduction, fire is ubiquitous across the landscape here in the Northern Rockies, and I think that's probably no surprise to any of you. As long as there has been cured vegetation and lightning that's co-mingled on these landscapes of the American West, there has been fire. With the arrival of the first humans to this North American landscape, they also added their element of fire use to the landscape. Over the past couple of centuries, with an influx of additional humans and settlers, there's been modifications to the landscape, either through those settlements themselves, through logging, grazing over the last century, through fire suppression. And I think, as we are well aware today, there is continued discussion of how to coexist with fire, which had an exclamation point last summer when smoke columns ringed the Missoula County area, and many of our homes and valleys and communities were choked in by smoke. So, in the aftermath of last season's fire events, Missoula County certainly, among others, has thought long and hard about what we need to be doing, what we have been doing, and what we should be doing in the future relative to living in these environments that burn, how to coexist with fire, recognizing that not only in the context of fuel treatments for keeping communities safe do we need to be talking about mechanical treatment, but also fire itself has a role in that discussion. We are currently in the midst of updating our community wildfire protection plan. We've been in conversations with the U.S. Forest Service and other government agencies in terms of how we might collaborate in this effort. And so, here we are today, as part of that process, as part of that conversation and dialogue. We've invited in today Dr. Mark Finney from the U.S. Forest Service's Rocky Mountain Research Station. Mark comes with a lot of experience on this topic that we're wrestling with. He holds degrees from Colorado State University in Fire Science, University of Washington in Fire Ecology, and received his PhD in Wildland Fire Science from the University of California, Berkeley. He's done work in fire history. He is very interested in, has done work in prescribed fire effects on fuel, and he lists, among his research interests, the processes related to fire spread, as well as applications of fire behavior models for fire management decision support, et cetera. So, without further ado, I would like to introduce Mark Finney and let him share some thoughts with us, and then we'll have some opportunity for public comment following. So, Mark?
Thank you very much for the introduction, Commissioners. Thank you for inviting me to speak to you today. I titled this talk "The Essential Role of Fire in Fire Management," and I think that there's one takeaway message that we, of all the information that I intend to present, if we have one takeaway message, it would be this, is that we don't really have a choice about fire. We have a choice only when to have fire and what kind to have. And so, in attempting, over a century, to exclude fire from our landscapes, we've ended up instead with fires that are managing us. So, as you indicated in your introduction, last summer was the catalyst for the reason that I'm presenting here, and this is a satellite image from GOES-16 showing one day some of the smoke plumes from around the region. And so, the smoke that we all breathed in this community for a month or more was not only produced locally, but it was also produced regionally. Several million acres were burning, also up in Canada and British Columbia the entire time. And so, the smoke produced from Oregon and Washington and even California was arcing up over a giant high pressure and dropping down into here, mixed with our own local production. So, that's certainly something we've seen over the last several decades. To demonstrate that, we prepared this map showing fire footprints on the landscape nearby Missoula here, only in the last 15 years. So, all of these areas have burned in the last 15 years, and primarily, they burned in four major years: 2003, '07, 2012, and last year, 2017. So, we are clearly living with fire. One way or another, we're living with fire, and there's even as much as burned here, there's a lot more left to burn. So, the summary of this kind of information is that we are living with wildfire. We are living with fires... So all of these areas have burned in the last 15 years. And primarily, they burned in four major years: 2003, '07, 2012, and last year, 2017. So we are clearly living with fire. One way or another, we're living with fire. And there's even as much as burned here, there's a lot more left to burn. So the summary of this kind of information is that we are living with wildfire. We are living with fires only under the most extreme conditions, however, as our attempts to exclude fire, pretty much through emergency response, have a pretty predictable outcome. We burn, we remove all the fires that we can, and only the ones that we can't are left to burn. So as a consequence here, we endure impacts on our resources, our watersheds and our communities, our timber supply. We breathe smoke, and we have evacuations. There's lots of impacts of this. We also endure tremendous expense, not only at the federal level, but also at the state. Last year, I think the federal government spent $2.5 billion in attempting to suppress fire. And at the state level, it's something on the order of $44 million, and they're still trying to sort out how they're going to pay for all that. So what our fire management program essentially comes down to today is primarily emergency response. If you, just to get a sense of how much this is, about 88% of the federal dollars in fire budgets are spent on emergency response. That is preparedness and large fire suppression. Only about 12% are spent on wildland fuels. And the asterisk there is to remind me to remark that state and local efforts are primarily also in emergency response. And if you tally up all the money spent, it's got to be in the high 90% range. And so to step away from fire and put this in perspective, and the consequences of this, think about what would happen if in the healthcare area, if we got rid of all the doctors' offices and we got rid of all the dentist's offices, and the only kind of healthcare we had is emergency treatment. We had only emergency rooms and paramedics and ambulances, things like that. Those would be absolutely necessary for healthcare, for sure. They would save lives. But the general state of health in the population would be terrible. All of us would be desperately ill, waiting for finally some stimulus to make us pay a lot of money for treatment and emergency care. That's what our fire management program essentially is. So, and with consequence, that our state of our wildlands, that are fire-dependent, are also in a desperate state. So what we attempted to do and have for the last century, and I'll show you some information on this, we've extinguished fires under mild and moderate conditions, basically removing 95% to 97%, varies a little bit by year. 3% to 5% of the fires escape, those escape because of extreme conditions, either a high number of ignitions or very dry conditions, very windy. And those very few percentages of the fire burn 95% of the area. So it brings us to a point where we have to ask ourselves some hard questions. Is this how we want our wildland fire? We don't have a choice in the matters whether to have fire in our fire-dependent ecosystems. So how do we want our fire? Do we want to attempt to remove fire under all possible circumstances, leaving only those fires to burn that we have no control over? That's essentially the situation today. Okay? What I'd like to do, in order to eventually get to the point of examining alternative ways to deal with this, is to begin, kind of at the beginning, examine how did we get to this place? How did we get to this point in time? Essentially, we've been attempting and failing to remove fire from these ecosystems for more than a century, and dramatic changes in fuel conditions as well as fire behavior resulted. So, not quite in the beginning, but it's a close start. Before the National Forest System was developed in 1905, there were places in the United States, in the Western U.S., called the Forest Reserves. And these were, these parcels identified in green there. And these were Forest Reserves. They were part of the Department of Interior. And the Congress sent people out to look at these, ride around on horseback, and examine what was in these Forest Reserves. And they wrote these very nice reports from the late 1800s through the early 1900s, and made observations on many different things: mining and timber management and water, many different things. One of the other things they made note of is fire activity or burned area. And so this is a map. This is from Ayers in 1900. This is a map from pretty much the Northern Rocky Mountains, including the Rocky Mountain Front. And so I'll try to point with the mouse here, see if it shows up. Oh, yeah. So this is the eastern side of the Rocky Mountains. It's hard for me to read here, so I won't point out any specific area. Well, there's Augusta right there. Sealy Lake is right in here. And the main feature on this map that I want you to have a look at is all this vertically hatched area is recently burned. So in 1900, the amount of fire that was evident on the landscape was tremendous, tremendous They also reported and published these pictures in these reports. These are scenes from Sealy Swan area. This one on the left says Yellow Pine on the Shore Placid Lake. And you'll notice the open spacing and the large trees and the grassy understory. There's not a lot of vegetation, not a lot of fuel in there. This is a picture entitled "Yellow Pine Near Holland's Ranch, Upper Swan River Valley", the same kind of a thing. The forest structure is composed of large trees, primarily herbaceous and grassy understory. And you can look through these reports and see lots of interesting pictures. But in the low and mid-elevations, what we're seeing in general is large trees, very open understory, grassy fuels, grassy and herbaceous fuels. So "Yellow Pine frequently and lightly burnt," it notes. Also, there are pictures of places that had stand-stronging fires. So these are in subalpine forests in the upper elevations, lodgepole pines, subalpine forests, and they burned intensely, they burned severely, and they always have, and they always will. That is the nature of them. You can see here that on the right-hand side, there is a lot of lodgepole pine regeneration in the foreground coming in after this fire. That's a normal part of the fire regime in these areas. So not all of it was in a condition that was frequently underburned. Here's one of the reports in the Bitterroot Valley. The Bitterroot Valley here on the right-hand side, you can see, also, this map shows all of these hatched areas that are recently burned. And they tried to estimate the dates of these, who knows how exactly accurate, but the evidence of frequent fire, the evidence of widespread fire was obvious to the writers of the report in 1899. Similar kinds of photographs exist in this publication: wide, large trees, grassy understory, pretty much the same thing. So that was in around the turn of the 20th century. And what's very compelling is that there's been many changes in these ecosystems since about that time. And probably the most obvious way to record that is through repeat photographs. And so there's a couple of publications here that do a nice job. I won't show you all of the different pictures, but photographs from the late 1800s, early 1900s are here, and then they've gone back to the exact same spot and retaken the picture. So you can see the changes that have happened. Just to pick out a couple here. On the left, you can see the ingrowth of trees, the thickening of the forest. The house remains the same. Same way with here on kind of a north-facing slope. The forests have gotten much more dense and much more continuous, pretty much across the entire landscape. There are classic sequences like this. You can see in 1909, this comes from the Bitterroot near Litt Creek, large open trees, grassy understory. And by 1948, you can see the same tree in the foreground, a lot of reproduction coming in. Obviously, there've been various kinds of logging activities, but without any fire, without any fire to remove regeneration, you end up with a very dense layer of reproduction in the understory. So these are changes that have happened as a consequence of removing fire. They weren't just in Montana by any means. They've been observed all over the West, California, in Arizona, and in Washington, and Oregon, and Idaho. This is a report from 1943 by Harold Weaver. He was a preeminent fire scientist at the time, warning of the effects of fire exclusion on the Colville Reservation and in Worm Springs Reservation in Oregon. His observations of stands becoming denser, fuel hazards, insects and disease problems, and severe fires. This was 1943. So people were seeing this a long time. We hear today a lot of discussion of the role of climate change in the current fire activity. There's no question that climate change is present and is influencing these fires, but long before climate change was a thing, but long before it was recognized or discussed scientifically, people were observing these changes in the forest. Close to home here. This was a study published in 1976 by Steve Arno. He was a research forester at the Fire Lab where I work. And he did what's called a fire history study, basically looked at the fire scars on trees to reconstruct the frequency of fires that existed in the Bitterroot Valley. He had three sites here: One Horse, which, incidentally, burned in the Lolo Peak Fire, West Fork, and Tolan. Let's just look briefly at some of his results, but this is a layout of the study site at One Horse Creek, and you see all these little points. Those are the locations of fire scar samples. And on the right is what one of these samples looks like. Here's the open scar cavity on one of these ponderosa pines. And here are the, each one of these little interruptions in the growth rings of the fire are fire scars. They indicate the dates that fires came along and just wounded the tree. And you can see that there was a very, very regular pattern of burning from 1612, the tree was, basically, it had the pith date there, but from 1659 all the way up to 1915. And that date's pretty significant, 1915 or early 1900s, and I'll show you why that is. If you count these scars and you count the interval, the fire, the intervals, the years between these scars, you can come up with an estimate of how frequent fire was. And so let's look briefly at some of the results from this publication. Here's for One Horse, try to move this, One Horse here, about every six years on average in the ponderosa pine zone, about every six years we had a fire coming through. And so it's pretty clear now why those pictures of grassy understories and large trees represented the state of the forest at the time, because fires came through fairly frequently and prevented reproduction and densification of the forest. Just by contrast, you go up in elevation to the top of the slope, and you end up with subalpine fir and whitebark pine at the top. And interestingly, here, the fire interval that he found was 41 years on average. That's very, very frequent compared to even our subalpine forest fire frequencies that we have now. There's a lot of fire in the landscape. And so one way to look at the variation in these fire intervals is by vegetation zone. The mountains, beginning in the valley bottom and going all the way up to the top, have different forest types, different forest ecosystems, different climate. And this represents, this results in different kinds of fire intervals. So looking here, you can see that down in the Pinion Juniper and the grasslands, we have fairly frequent fires, five to 10 years. Ponderosa pine forest, 10 to 30 years. And it goes all the way up to perhaps 100 to 300 years in between fires. Okay? And if this fire regime had continued, let's say that the fires of the past, around 1900, had continued all the way up to the present, it's interesting to try to understand how much area would be burning right now. And so what we did is a little exercise here. We made a kind of arbitrary box around the Missoula area, and we calculated the number of acres by vegetation zone for this vegetation zone for each one of these, within this box. And if you divide the number of acres by the number of years, let's say the midpoint, what you end up is the number of, an estimate of the number of acres on average that would be burning in a given year. And so if you sum those up, you can see that we'd be burning on average within that box around 36,000 acres per year, just within the box around Missoula. So if you look at where the most acres are burned here, you've got 16,000 acres in the ponderosa pine forest, because fires are so frequent there, about 10,000 acres a year in the mixed conifer forest. And because of both the few acres that exist, as well as the longer fire intervals, you're not burning near as much in other kinds of vegetation zones. But that's a lot of land to be burning on a regular basis. I would say that that's certainly not any more than we're burning already, we're just burning it under different conditions. All that changed in 1910. You remember the last scar date from Steve Arno's study was 1915. And everything changed in 1910 with respect to Forest Service policy and official attempts to exclude fire. It happened because of the Idaho Divide fires that burned on the order of 3 million acres it's estimated in Northern Rockies that year. It's a very famous year. This is a map showing the extent of the burned area in 1910. But what's very interesting about the story of the 1910 fires that often people don't recognize is the hand of human beings in creating those. This is a report by Roscoe Haynes. He was basically the forest supervisor on the Coeur d'Alene National Forest at the time. And he listed the causes of the fires that, in his area. And if you notice, the locomotives were the single largest cause. 59% of all the fires were caused by locomotives. Only 5% by lightning, the rest are other human types of causes. This is very interesting, because there was a wholesale change in the way we approached fire after 1910. And yet, a lot of these fires were caused by human beings, with the consequence that the largest single swaths of burned areas, not surprisingly, are overlapping the railroad lines. They were just put in a year or two before that. And so if you look at, here's the Milwaukee Road, there's St. Mary's, and Wallace is here. Of course, everybody knows that Wallace, much of the town burned down, but also the Northern Pacific. The railroads were burning wood, the cinders were coming out of the stack, and they just couldn't keep up with the number of fires. And so basically, the fires burned along the railroads. It would have been a big fire year anyway, but human contributions were very significant here. Nevertheless, the fire policy changed, and we began an organized effort to remove fire. The idea was that if we could replace fire, insects, and disease, we would replace those with harvesting and intensive management. So how well have we done? Well, one way to assess that is looking back exactly 100 years ago, this decade in the 19-teens. Well, good records were kept throughout the National Forest in California, and these records were of the number of fires by size class. And so in the decade 1911 to 1920, basically, they put out all fires that they could, which amounted to an average of about 96% of the fires were contained less than 300 acres. That's what's called initial attack success, or that's how, one performance metric that we use today, was the percentage of fires that we keep smaller than a particular size, in this case, 300 acres. So in those days, with horses and shovels and the forest conditions at the time, they were able to keep, put out 96% of the fires before they got to 300 acres. Today, we average about 97% in the same national forest. That's pretty interesting. With horses and shovels and the kind of technology that they had, and access and communications and everything, they achieved a 96% IA success rate. Yet today, it costs hundreds and hundreds of millions of dollars in California alone to try to exclude fire with nominally the same IA success rate. What's going on here? Well, the explanation is the fuels that they inherited at the time in the 19-teens were already conditioned by centuries or millennia of burning by not only the Native Americans, but also natural lightning ignitions. So of course, it's easy to put out fires when you have a grassy understory with no large woody fuels and no, not very dense forests. So yes, it was understandable that people could think that we could be successful at completely removing fire if only we tried hard enough. It was thought. But there are unintended consequences of that, and that is that we're saving the fuels from burning under mild conditions, we save them up for the most extreme conditions. So in case you're wondering, maybe they had fewer fires in those days. Not true. You can see 1911 to 1920, they had about the same number of fires per million acres that we do now, about the same number. And what's interesting, they burned about the same amount of acres. So what are we actually achieving by attempting and failing to remove fire through organized fire suppression? We're not removing fire from the landscape. We're just pushing it off to the more extreme conditions when we really have very little control over it. Now, even though we were pursuing, as a nation, attempts to control fire and to remove it from our wildlands, this wasn't uniformly accepted. This is an article on the left by George Hoxsey. He was a practical lumberman, and he's arguing, it's kind of interesting here, it says, "The practical versus the federal government's theoretical ideas." The tables have turned now, isn't it? You know, essentially, allowing fires and recognizing the need for fire in our landscape, that's become the theoretical idea, not the removal of fire. But this guy, it says he's a practical lumberman with wide experience and large interest in forestry. Tells how we must, fire must be fought with fire, and sounds a note of warning against these theoretical policies. He didn't win, and neither did a lot of his compatriots. They didn't win the argument at the time. This is an article on the right. This is an article on the right, written by William Greeley, he was the third chief of the Forest Service, and he soundly refuted pretty much every suggestion that George Hoxsey made. And, and of course, we have the legacy of that, that today. The bottom line is we're burning a heck of a lot less than we ever used to, prehistorically. So, the ecosystems that European settlers found when they arrived on the continent and moved westward had been cultured by millennia of various fire influences, and those were interrupted, starting around the early 1900s. And so, comparing the modern rates of burning, dividing that by the historical rates, you can see where we're in deficit. And everywhere in the cool colors, the greens and the blues, we're burning a lot less than we used to. Everywhere in the orange and the red, we're burning more. And those places where we're burning more are primarily in the Great Basin, where we have invasive grasses that allow the land to burn pretty much every year. We also have down in California, we have what you might call invasive people, igniting fires a lot and adding to the fire regime down there. So, you, you can estimate that on national forest lands, using these methods, we're, we're burning about a fifth to a sixth of what we used to burn, just on national forest lands, and it's probably lower than a tenth if you include all lands. So, that's how we got to where we're at. Where do we go from here? Are there any alternatives to what we're doing now? And if there are, then what are they? Well, yes, there are, and I wouldn't be here talking if there weren't. The alternatives have been well represented in scientific literature and in management literature for now about a century. These are just a few of the publications, but they're, they're, they are very numerous, they're in the hundreds, that demonstrate scientifically how fuels can be managed, how forests can be managed to be, to be in a sustainable, sustainable state with fire. We hear a lot, politically especially, people proposing that logging is, is the solution, that we can log our way out of the problem with mechanical means. And the conclusion from the scientific literature is, is quite succinct, that often, mechanical activities are necessary before you can introduce fire. They're often necessary to change those dense forests into open ones, preserve the, the fire-resistant individuals and species before fire can be returned. But if all you do is logging, that's insufficient. It demonstrated very, very conclusively, I'm going to show you just a few studies, and also some local evidence, but logging alone is not going to get us out of the fire problem. It may be necessary, but it's not sufficient. Let's have a look at just a little bit of the research, there's a great deal of this, it's going to be for yourself, but this was a study done in California, in the Sierra Nevada, where these researchers divided up the landscape into various plots, they did combinations of thinning and burning. And then, they had a wildfire that had burned through it, that was not planned, but it came through under very extreme conditions, and they were able to document the different kinds of effects. And this slide shows that you can clearly delineate the different treatments from the air, without even having any data, you can see where we had thinned and burned, and you see a very little burned area there, and where it was completely untreated, it was a crown fire. So, let's look at on the ground, this is the pretreatment conditions, very dense forest, this is California, but this could be the same for any state in the West. There's something that was supposed to be there. They did thinning operations, this is a high diversity thin, where they left many different size classes of different species, but they left it unburnt. This is a low diversity, where they pretty much had uniform residual trees, but no burning. Then, they had the same kind of combinations, but they did under burning, and five years went elapsed before this wildfire happened. So, the, the observations in the documentation here is not surprising, really, that unthinned, unmanaged forests burned as a crown fire. The places that had thinned and burned are still green, and the fire burned through in a very mild fashion, basically gave them a free fuel treatment. What was surprising to these researchers was this slide, that the places that were thinned, but had no prescribed burning, suffered complete mortality. 100% of those trees were killed. Yes, the intensities of the surface fire, the wildfire that came through was, was modified, it was lower, but they lost all of their, their trees. And the places that, this is back-to-back photos, right next door, where they had the prescribed burning, they removed the pre-existing surface fuels, and I'm going to describe exactly what components those were, they came through just fine, no real problems. Another example, this is a pretty, a clear one, the Rodeo Chedosky fires were the biggest fires at one time in, in Arizona history, they were 460,000 acres combined, the two of them burned. This is a satellite image of the fires burning, and, and what you can see in here are these curious little holes in the fire. Here's a, a green hole here and kind of an elbow here, a couple of other green holes. Well, we investigated this, and we found out that those are areas that had been recently prescribed burned, within the last decade, the decade prior to the fire. And so, basically, the fire's going around these, these prescribed burn units. But the story even is, is more, more compelling than that, when you realize that pretty much this entire area of the Mogollon Rim, just, this is east of Flagstaff, ponderosa pine forest, everything inside roughly that, that big polygon, big black polygon, is considered commercial forest. It had all been thinned, it had all been managed, all of it had undergone timber harvesting and management for decades and decades. Yet, the only places that the Rodeo and Chedosky wildfires really changed their behaviors in the places that had recent prescribed burns. So, once again, we have timber harvesting, it was necessary before they could burn it, but it was not sufficient alone. And here's an example contrasting on the right-hand side, the areas that had been thinned only, and this is the places that had been thinned and burnt. Close to home, let's talk about, let's talk about some of the evidence that's right in our backyard. There's been a lot of timber harvesting in the Northern Rockies, even recently, and perhaps the best examples of, of where recent harvests occurred is on these checkerboard lands. Checkerboard means every other section belongs to either the federal government or to a private, non-federal, whether it's state or whether it was Plum Creek. So, you would think that if harvesting alone would have a giant influence on wildfires, then a place where 50% of the landscape was treated, or treated, 50% of the landscape was harvested, you would certainly be able to see an effect there, because 50% is a very large fraction. This is the Rice Ridge Fire from last summer, Seeley Lakes right here. Right through the first burning period, or the first couple of burn periods, is a giant area of checkerboard. Every other section was harvested, okay? You'd figure that the fire would have some modifications that burned through there, but the fire progression pattern shows, here, these are daily fire perimeters, that it burned through there pretty much unimpeded. So, here we have harvesting, nothing wrong with harvesting, that's not my point. The point is, if we expect it to change wildfires under these extreme conditions, we are going to be disappointed. Here is, let's go back, here's Lola Peak Fire, it had a number of checkerboard units on it. Jaco Lakes Fire from 2007, burned extremely rapidly as a crown fire through checkerboard. The only thing that this fire, that held it up was a previously burned area, in 2003 was the Bowles Meadow Fire, those kind of having a little edge matching going on there. But, but the, the checkerboard pattern of harvest units didn't change the movement of this fire. Same way with the Chippy Creek Fire, the Chippy Creek is up north, kind of by Hot Springs, and there was a tremendous amount of activity, of harvesting activity here and on the other side, and yet, it went through there in one burning period. Here is a picture of that fire burning right up to the ridge and coming over the top. So, you can see a lot of interesting behavior here, crown fire spotting, and eventually burned all the way through here, just in a matter of, of hours. So, there are unique benefits to fire, to fire, prescribed burning or wildfire, there are unique benefits to fuels and to ecology of that. And I'd like to just list some of these briefly. But, these are, these are benefits of fire that don't occur through logging. The principal one is it removes fuels that wildfires depend on, it removes fuels that aren't unmerchandiseable, they're not, they're not, they're not commercially viable. You're not going to get anybody to pick up the duff and the litter and to small, non-merchandiseable trees. Litter and duff seems innocuous, seems like it's underfoot, and it's, it's not a very threatening kind of a fuel load, but the fact is, it constitutes a majority of the fuel loading in the forest, and it's continuous, and it burns a long time. I'm going to show you some pictures of what, how it contributes to extreme fire behavior. Rotten wood, how are we going to remove rotten wood from the forest? Rotten wood, you say, well, there's nothing wrong with it. That's true, from an ecological standpoint, but from a spotting standpoint, the embers, lofted by wildfires, often ignite rotten wood preferentially because it's very fine and powdery, it ignites very easily. You'll find most of the spots and, and spot fires originating in rotten wood. That's not going to be removed, certainly, by any kind of commercial harvesting. Scorch and kill littler limbs of residual trees, topkill brush species, force them to respout, et cetera. At the landscape level, burning reduces the chance of large fire behavior, that is, large fires with very, very large plumes. The end result is that if you remove these kinds of fuel through burning, that we have wildfires with very thin flame zones, they spread very slowly and with very low severity, even under extreme conditions. So, what is prescribed fire? People are often confused about the difference between prescribed burning and wildfires, but prescribed burnings are, prescribed fire is conducted under specific conditions needed to achieve management objectives. The ignitions patterns are determined and controlled, the weather conditions are chosen, that is, the wind and the fuel moisture, the ecological effects are specified, fuel consumption, things like that. Though certainly, there are variations in prescribed burning, in the prescription, and also how well it can be achieved. Sometimes, sometimes a prescription doesn't achieve the kind of fuel consumption desired, so repeated burning is necessary. This is used tremendously in the southern forests. We don't have to look very far in the United States to find places where they have a completely different relationship with fire, where they're proactively managing the fuels in the fire through, through widespread prescribed burning. So, I want to show you a sequence of photographs taken on the Hayman Fire in Colorado in 2002. If you look in the background, you can see on the forest floor, nothing but litter and duff. And the fire's coming over the hill, this is the engine crew that's sitting here, sitting here protecting this old barn. I don't know whether they were successful, they were successful or not, but watch the fire come over the hill, it's just burning in litter and duff. There is no dead and down fuel, there's very, very little, small, very little regeneration in the understory, the forests are relatively thin. And essentially, the fire comes through and becomes a crown fire, only burning in litter and duff. So, just about finished. Fire on the landscape, it's unavoidable. We have it now, and we will always have it, irrespective of how hard we fight. So, what we need to determine is, how much do we need? The frequency and this extent? Where do we need it? What are our priorities? What do we do? What do we get for it? What happens if we would engage in essentially replacing extreme wildfires with intentional burns, that we would get a sustainability of ecosystems, compatibility with our human presence and uses, and reduce risk that can be quantitatively estimated? And you mentioned the Community Wildfire Protection Plan, and that certainly, it relies on methods that can be used to estimate exactly that. There is a downside to this, of course, and that can be summarized in one word, and I call it accountability. And what I mean by that is, right now, no one really owns wildfire. No one is accountable for wildfire. It is considered a natural disaster, and is such an act of God, and if, if that is the view that's taken, then essentially, everybody can claim to be a victim. And no one takes accountability for not only the treatments, not only the alternatives, but also the outcomes. And so, that's the downside, is someone is going to have to own the wildfire problem if we try to trade the current situation for an alternative. Now, people are choosing to do that. This isn't the only place in the country that's waking up to the fact that we're not removing extreme wildfire, we're not getting rid of it by trying to, trying to suppress our way out of it. This is a couple of images from this 20-year Forest Health Plan released in Eastern Washington, for Eastern Washington in October 2017, and you see the main things that they talk about is mechanical treatment and prescribed fire. And it's a very good document, carefully prepared with many different partners, to talk about how many acres they need to treat and what fashion, but it emphasizes the use of prescribed burning. Just this week, a independent report was issued to the California government and the governor from something called the Little Hoover Commission, which I've never heard of before, but was interesting, but it's an independent group, they, they produce reports advising the California government on many different issues. They released this report this week, found it on the web, it's "Fire on the Mountain: Rethinking Forest Management in the Sierra Nevada." And what prompted them is basically the spectacular failures in terms of large wildfires affecting communities, as well as the massive tree mortality that's occurring in the Sierra Nevada. They say 129 million trees are, are dead there. So, here, just read this excerpt, it says, "Instead of focusing solely on fire suppression, the state must institute wide-scale control burns and other strategic measures as a tool to reinvigorate forests, inhibit firestorms, and protect air and water quality," according to the commission's report. So, I think there's widespread recognition that alternatives are needed, alternative approaches to managing fire, and none of them, none of them have concluded that we need to remove, need to try to redouble our efforts to try to remove fire. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you, Mark. I'd also like to recognize Colin Hardy, he's with us today, he's the director out at the Fire Sciences Laboratory. I don't know if you had anything you wanted to add, Colin or not, not to put you on the spot, but that's okay. Okay, come on up to the mic, yeah. And just go ahead and make sure the green light is on and state your name if you could.
Thanks, and I'm Colin Hardy, program manager of Fire Research at the Fire Lab, where Mark and a lot of the folks in the audience work. I have to say that I'm also a native Missoulian and a second-generation fire scientist, and I can't imagine a better time and a place than in the Missoula area to have this conversation. As we talked the last couple of weeks with the commissioners and others, this wonderful Missoula-area Cohesive Strategy Council comprised of prescribed burners, of feds, of local, state, city, open space, nature conservancy, all of us in research, we had a couple of workshops, you remember, we had one in the Fire Lab this fall, and we talked a little bit about the cohesive strategy, that's the Wildland Fire Management Cohesive Strategy, which is signed by the Wildland Fire Leadership Council, which is all the federal organizations, the states, the western governors, the national governors, association of counties, city governments, all of us are represented on that cohesive strategy, which tells us that we ought to co-manage this together and work together. And so, we had this workshop and talked about how we can do that, and we had a whiteboard exercise, and one of the most poignant things that I saw there was, if we can't do that here in this area, then shame on us, because we are truly at the right time in the right place. So, on behalf of Forest Service Research, we're here at the table, working with the forest and the city and others to try to figure out how we can do this in the long haul to make a difference in Missoula. I had an opportunity to tell this story to the Wildland Fire Leadership Council in Washington DC with the undersecretaries and others, and I bragged about this effort. Largely led, thank you to the commissioners for your leadership on this, they're looking at us as a poster child to see how we can work together and help co-manage this problem. So, thanks for the offer.
Thank you, Colin. And we'll take some public comment here in a second, but do the commissioners have any questions at this time?
I don't have any questions, but I just think that, that, well, we're really fortunate to have the, all the research that's going on right here in, in Missoula, and this is the third time that the commissioners ourselves have met with folks from the Fire Lab, and you learn a little bit more every time. And I do think that we are in the right place at the right time. But the challenge, of course, in the Missoula area is our topography and the fact that we have to figure out how to use prescribed fire while not putting our, the fact that we have been a, an area that's under management by EPA for having bad air. So, we have to figure out how to balance those two and not, not endanger, putting us back in that bad category with the EPA. And so, we've had folks from the Health Department at the table and folks from the Air Quality Advisory Committee, and I see some of them here today. So, that's the interesting thing, and I don't know if you have this information with you here today, Mark, but I've seen some from, from one of our great areas or departments that work on that, just showing the difference between what is in wild, the, I can't think, the particulates that are in a wildfire smoke and in a wildfire smoke and in prescribed fire smoke is different. And it's, you know, worse for your health, of course, when it's like it was last summer when we looked like Beijing. I don't know if you have that information with you, but it is something that we'll make sure we share with people if they're interested. So thanks for being here.
Yeah, I don't have any of that information here, and there are much better people than myself to address exactly that, the differences. But you are correct that there are major differences.
Thank you.
I don't really have anything to say other than thank you, everyone, for being here. I think, like you said, if it can't happen here, shame on us, because we are ideally situated with, everyone is at the table, everyone is interested in moving it forward. You know, there have been a lot of hard conversations already. We've gotten together several times. There are working groups getting together and people who, it's so easy in a situation to point fingers and say, well, we can't do this because of them, and we can, you know, and really, all of that, we're past all of that, and it's gone to the wayside. And everybody is really working together to say, what can we do? And what can we do differently? And how can we move this forward? And it wouldn't happen without everyone in this room caring and all the groups that are engaged. So, thank you so much for all your work, everybody that's been involved in this.
Thanks. Let's go ahead and open it up for public comment. Come on up, or queue up behind the pillar there, and come to the microphone and state your name for the record, please. Harold.
Green light is on. My name's Harold Hoem, from Missoula here. I'm going to offer you an invitation. This is a grassroots effort that our group, the Montana Elders for a Liveable Tomorrow, is attempting to get done as a sort of a spark plug to ignite other things, for basically looking and focusing on from the house out, the house that's in the wildland urban interface, which is as much a condition as it is a geographical location. And I haven't heard much mention of that tonight, but please view what I'm saying here in this public service announcement as complimentary to what we're doing. And again, shame on us if we can't do this. Our group, as elders, of course, we're getting a little older every year, it's the law. And I, myself, was a smoke jumper here in Missoula back in, not back in 1910, but 19, late 1950s, which is still a ways back there, so it does sort of date me. But many of the people in our group have had connections with the, with fire, either as smoke jumpers or as battalion commanders here in Missoula and fire officers up in Alaska. And a lot of us, of course, have places in the wildland urban interface. So, look at this, what I'm offering here as, from a citizen's standpoint, grassroots movement to try to get people engaged and take on some responsibility of their own, for their own homes. Because in many cases, the homeowner's the only one that can do much. Otherwise, you might get arrested for trespassing. So you've got to fix it yourself. And as far as what can we do, here's a list of some things. We're going to have our three meetings coming up. One is with the MOLI, Montana OSHA Lifeline Learning Institute. Many of our elder folks go to these classes at the university. Neighborhoods and firefighters is offering a program to show you ways to make your home safer in case of a wildfire. Renowned fire scientist, Dr. Jack Cohen, who worked at Missoula Fire Sciences Laboratory for two decades, will discuss his findings and recommendations in person on March 7th and 21st, and by film, March 11th. We're going to be discussing and covering some of these issues, home survival stories from people who've actually lived through this. Assessing your home's fire-wise needs for free. Reverse 911, how it can work for you in an emergency. Insurance, what to ask your insurance agent and what you need to know. Financial and work assistance that may be available. Fire escaping techniques, including plants, undercover ember screens, et cetera. Working alone is good, and working with neighbors is better. All events are free. Event times and locations are Wednesday, March 7th, 5:00 p.m., University Center Theater on the UM campus for MOLI members and their guests. So if you know a MOLI member, maybe you can get yourself in as a guest. Sunday, March 11th, 1:00 p.m., Our Savior Lutheran Church, 8985 Highway 200 East, off the Bonner Exit, Montana, for the general public. Refreshments available. Wednesday, March 21st, 7:00 p.m., Best Western Grant Creek Inn, 5280 Grant Creek Road, just north of I-90 at the Reserve Street Exit, number 101, for the general public. Refreshments are available. Bring a neighbor with you if you can. And thank you for having these programs, and I'm glad you're really addressing this here. Bend, Oregon is one place that's fire-adapted their community, and that's what I'd like to see in the end run. I mean, knowledge is power, but you have to do something. You have to make use of the knowledge. Just sitting on your heels and letting somebody else do it, hoping a firefighter will come along, it may not always be available if you get a surrounded situation like we have here. I personally have lost two homes that I built in the Meadow Valley that were wiped out a few years ago in a huge, fast-moving, one of those extreme fires. Maybe if I'd done a better job firewizing, those homes hadn't been, wouldn't have been destroyed. I don't know. But it certainly opens up the options when you have firewired your house. And we've had testimony from people who were up in the Lower Peak Fire this year. I think oftentimes, people like to hear it from citizens' mouths instead of just from the government. So anyhow, I hope you all come. Pass these out. I have a few copies here if anyone's interested, but I'll certainly get some to you folks.
Great, thank you.
I'm Mary Erickson from the Bonner Milltown community. I'm working with Harold and his melt group. I'm with Friends of Two Rivers, which is just coincidental. But having lived in the face of wildfire, both in the wilderness in the 1970s and early 80s, and also the Blodgett Canyon Mill Fire in 2000 was quite entertaining from my backyard, I've realized over the years that there's a lot of things that individual homeowners can do to protect your own property as much as you are humanly capable. We're not the experts, but we will try to find some of the expert information for you. So please do come to these meetings and take home as much information as you can, whatever assistance we can offer, and however we can connect you up with other assistance. We'd also ask the commissioners that if you can connect us with community groups in other areas, we'd be willing to spread the word, not the fire.
Thanks, Mary.
Commissioners, my name is Rich Lane. I appreciate you guys holding this meeting today. I think it was really important. And Mark, I really enjoyed your presentation. I learned some things that I didn't know. I'm the forester and log buyer for the Bonner, Montana chip plant. So I work with the forest industry, which, what I hope will happen is, there'll be recognition that in Montana, we have a, still have a special thing. I've looked around the West and Flagstaff and other areas of the West that no longer have any sawmills or ways to utilize wood, or wood that's removed from a restoration project. And in Montana, where we still have about 10 sawmills and a couple of chip plants, there's opportunities to help defray some of the cost of restoration work that's needed, the fuels removal part. And I think we can play an important role in helping to accomplish the goals that I think you're going to be developing. The second point is that most of us in this room honor our forest firefighters, our firefighters, wildland firefighters. There was a funeral in town this summer that broke a lot of hearts when we lost Trenton Johnson. And those guys are truly heroes. What I'd like to see also be recognized going forward is what I coin as forest restoration heroes. And those are the folks that maybe helped design, like Jen would do, helped design the projects that can do the most work for the least money. And then, some of the kids, or their kids to me, that are doing that work in the forest, helping to remove those fuels. And in Montana, we have an organization known as the Montana Logging Association, and they lead the nation in logger training. And loggers, many of you may know a logger or two. I know of one in this room right now that care a lot about the resources in protecting wetlands and streams and watersheds, fisheries and hunting areas. And those folks are also heroes, and they're trained through the Montana Logging Association to protect all the other resources. So I think it's important to recognize at some point in time those restoration heroes. Thank you.
Thanks, Rich.
Dave Atkins, publisher of Tree Source Magazine, also a member of the Missoula County Air Quality Advisory Council. So I've been involved in these discussions quite a bit. And Gene, it's Bob Jokelson, the, one of the researchers at the University of Montana that has done that research on the wildfire smoke versus prescribed fire and for particulate matter. It's 17 times more from a wildfire than it is from the prescribed fire. That's a massive difference. And we know from last summer and other summers that smoke has tremendous health effects. And so, we want to reintroduce the fire to achieve the objectives, but we want to reduce the amount of smoke as well. And one of the challenges is that with wildfire, smoke's not regulated. It doesn't fall under the Clean Air Act. It's an act of God. It's a disaster. But what we've seen from Mark's presentation, that's questionable. It's a disaster of our own making. And we have the tools that we can use to reduce the potential for that smoke. And so, I think we really need to be thinking about smoke in a different way and how we can manage that. And Rich's point on, you know, ways to utilize it is really important, and I want to add to what he said. The opportunity to use slash piles for energy, instead of just burning those slash piles and putting that smoke in the air, or waiting for the wildfire to do that, we can, again, reduce the amount of smoke. The Smurfet Stone Pulp Mill used to consume close to 300,000 tons of slash in the energy production facility out there. We need to be thinking about replacing that and expanding that. And we've got some examples of that around our own state and other cities and states as well. And I would really encourage you to think about, you know, what we need to do between the city and the county to encourage the development of more wood energy options that can burn this material very cleanly and reduce the amount that we need to put in the atmosphere. Examples, Seattle has a district energy system, St. Paul, Minnesota, Montpelier, Vermont. Small town of Burns, Oregon, has put in a wood heating loop that uses that kind of stuff. We've got universities and colleges all across the country, University of Idaho, Western in Dillon here. We've got K-12 schools, some hospitals that are using wood chips and wood pellets. We need to be expanding the number of those so that we can consume more of that material rather than putting that smoke into the atmosphere and affecting the citizens of our county. And the Stoltz Lumber Mill, man, I can't remember now, five, six years ago or so, put in a Cogen. So they're producing heat and power, and they're using wood residues to do that. I really encourage you to think about how we can work with the economic development parts of the community to expand those opportunities. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave. Additional public comment?
Come on up. Ron Slater. Mine is more of a suggestion, when you're putting your plan together, your fire prevention or your fire plan, is use wide boundaries on it. I worked with county in southeast Idaho on that, and one of the things we tried to avoid was when we set the, for the wildland urban interface area, was not to set the area too narrow and to set it out wider. Even if you're out into the Forest Service, the National Forest Land, the Forest Service has laws that they can have a little more flexibility in working with counties that have their fire plans and to coordinate with that, then they can kind of get around, not get around, I hate to say get around, the environmental issues. But the law is there to allow the Forest Service to work with the counties to thin those areas that are within that wildland urban interface area. So my suggestion is, is when you sit down with the Forest Service and the state, the DNRC, is to try to get a good wide boundary, because when that fire like that is coming over the hill, 100-foot buffer strip isn't going to help you. You need something pretty good wide. You've got to get it on the ground quick, and the longer it's on the ground, the better your chances to put it out. Thanks.
Thank you. And just so folks know, within the next month or so, I think we'll begin the public phase of the Community Wildfire Protection Plan update. So stay tuned. There will be an opportunity for folks to take a look at that document and add specific suggestions for that process. Any additional public comment at this time? Well, I just want to thank everyone for coming, especially Mark. Thank you for your excellent presentation. Thanks for everyone's interest. This is part of an ongoing conversation, like others have suggested. We have a tremendous amount of resource capability here in Missoula, Montana, and Missoula County to think through these issues. And my goal would certainly be that Missoula can be the brightest star in Montana's big sky when it comes to thinking about resiliency, living with fire, and I have no doubt that we are up to the challenge. Yes, additional comment?
Just one more thing that, instead of, one more thing that we talked about when we met with the Fire Lab. It was interesting, because we were out there one of the day when one of the fires in Cedar Lake blew up. I can't remember which one it was. It might have been the one on the Jaco.
Liberty, I think.
But we talked about, when you use prescribed burn, it's kind of this, you know, is it better to have a few days of prescribed burn that might sock us in a little more, because we try not to do it, you know, weather changes? So it's kind of that social license. When do we help? We need to help people understand that that might prevent the one that's on the screen right now. So as you talk to your neighbors, talk about how we find a balance.
All right. Thanks, everyone, for coming. And if there's no further business on the part of the commission, we'll be in recess. Thank you.